I don't want to correct it. We didn't recommend just one coat. We talked about all of them. We didn't come to a recommendation that we were only recommending one coat. We didn't, we didn't come to any recommendation, zero, one, or two. Because the issue was budget. One, is there enough money in this budget? Two, is it appropriate to use the money from last time they paid for this purpose? And three, should we did it out? So that was, those were our questions.
So these prices are not from contractors, they're just...
They are from, they are from the contractors. From the guy that's doing painting of the other building, painting the other part. So it was while, so I just asked him for prices and while you're there. And he gets the building looks like it needs to be painted to me. That's what I'm sure.
Oh, I don't think I answered his question.
Right. So I just said I'd ask him while he was there. If it makes sense for him to do it while he's there, then, and if not, you won't rely on him.
Well, we're gonna paint the, well, obviously we're gonna paint the other building.
Right.
When it's built, right, the, where the cardboard goes.
Right.
I mean, it wouldn't make sense to do the whole thing at one time. That way we get one price instead of doing it out twice and, you know, postponing it until we're ready to do everything, kind of the final touch type thing? Or does it any advance to that at all?
There was, I guess, a thought of putting one coat on now. And then when the addition is done, then put one more coat over the whole thing. You know, the contractor was recommending that for the condition it's in, it'll definitely take two coats.
Yeah, but two, uh, now...
The first coat's gonna suck it up. And the second one really needs, so there was some logic of just doing one now. And then when they paint the new building.
And the other thing is, if, if we're gonna paint now, shouldn't we do the repay at, the running stuff?
Right.
It doesn't make sense to just paint over that.
No, the only, the only sketch is there's 24 feet of the building that is gonna be inside the addition. So I'm not sure if that wall is gonna stay or not stay, or how it can make. They may take that wall out entirely. They may just put a double door in there. I think that's what the latest class were talking. So I just wasn't sure how much of that was gonna stay, so it would be...
So we could wait, we could just do the painting and wait down there?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would at least take that.
Excuse me, I'm gonna take this call, it's from Bob Thompson. Okay. Good afternoon, sir.
I know. Tried to call my cell phone, sure.
Yes, we're here. Are you, you joining us?
I'm John. I'm here with the area, I'm in Gorman, like at the Walmart.
Okay.
Uh, I can talk to the agenda, I didn't have to come up.
Okay. He's still up north and will not be able to make it. I was the only one that had a cellphone that he could reach, so.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on. Can I, can I put you on speakerphone and then...
No, that's okay. Just asking, did he make arrangements with, uh...
Did you make it?
Pat to pick the stuff up?
Hold on. Okay, so you're on speakerphone, go ahead.
Did you make arrangements with Pat to pick the stuff up in London Dairy, Manchester?
Uh, I told him that the sign was me and he did so.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if the, uh, the last key knew that was a holdup on something and the initial pickup time.
Yeah, we, we got that, we've got that all fixed. We just, so he still needs to be, it's okay with you. If he doesn't, someone just needs to tell him to do it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So I've got a hard copy of the agenda and I've got a parking space here at Walmart. So I'm happy to, it's just a pickup with a phone.
Oh, yeah. Fine with me.
Fine with me.
Okay.
All right.
And I'm not, I'm not participating all driving, I want you to come back, John.
Okay.
Okay, so who's, who's gonna contact Pat and tell him to, to go do this?
Well, I think he, the way he contacted me, he was planning on doing it. So it sounded like it was...
So we'll just contact and let him, I'll let him know.
I'll confirm.
Okay, you're gonna confirm with him, okay.
All right, okay, that's that. We're down to painting on the building. Whether we do one coat, two coats, or any, or whether we need to put it out to bed or just let this contractor do it. Since there was a discrepancy in the other bay a little bit, I'm not opposed to just letting him do it. Whatever, if we decide to do it, I'm not opposed to him doing it.
Well, I just, I think what we just talked about earlier, I'd like to see more definitive, you know, what's gonna stay, what needs to be done now, and what can wait for the next construction aspect.
He's just talking about, that, that's not the painting. That's the, replace the running or whatever.
Well, right, but again, some of it has to be replaced and repaired and then painted after it. Do we wanna at least know the scope of what we need to get done now? What has to be done now, and then what can be done?
Well, again, along the back, it's the two feet basically, buzzing ground on the whole back side of the building really needs to get done. And there's like 24 feet, I wanna say 20 or 24 feet is inside the future addition. That wall may or may not go depending on how they put the addition on. Right. So we, we could skip that section and then just go from the edge of the foundation, you know, the new foundation to the front, save a little bit, and then...
I'd say perhaps a few feet of...
No, but instead of 48, I mean, your feet, you're now at whatever it's gonna be, 40, 24 feet, or something like that. 20 or eight feet.
But for painting, I'd say get a coat on the, you know, we still have some weather, you know, good weather. Get a coat on and then whenever we have the cardboard shed or build, then do...
One more.
One more. And I, I think one coat on the new work will be fine. And I definitely think that two coats on the old, on the existing building would be appropriate.
Right. Knowing nothing about painting, if we put one coat on now, are we still gonna be able to just put another one on next year? Have it work?
That'll work fine?
Yeah. Okay.
Matter of fact, is this first coat's gonna suck in?
That's what I mean. I didn't know if it sucked in so much we'd have to put two on.
No, and then it, it'll act almost like a sealer. And then when we get to the other, I think it'll be fine.
And so consensus, one, one coat?
Yes.
And we want to match the present, we want to all match up.
Right, right.
Okay. All right, one coat.
They'll use the same paint for the new wood canopy in the existing building.
And are these prices reasonable, or do you question the issue of bidding them out?
I didn't compare them to any other prices. On the surface to me, just from having people quote my house, they seem like a pretty reasonable number. I mean, I guess it's a pretty straightforward job there, but...
Yeah, he'll spray it.
I don't think it's way out of line, that's for sure.
No, but it isn't out of line. It's gonna be a lot of product.
Yeah.
And a lot of setup, and that's, that's an elevation to it.
Yeah, he's got that sky lift, you know, thing, so he's, it's there anyway for the other side, so that helps now.
But no, this doesn't seem out of line at all.
Okay, so you let him know what he wants to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So on the bottom part of that, if he wanted, whatever it was, $1,200 to replace that two feet of siding, which, so should we just have him replace, uh, just outside of the addition? So 20?
Whatever we like.
So that $1,200 may probably quickly go down to $800 or $700. Makes sense?
Okay, all right, okay.
We, how about both of these operated buildings, are we doing those too?
No, those don't need them now, do they?
We, can't we, can't we do those, I mean, can't they? I mean, we can find somebody in town to do those, can't we? For a lot less, I would think.
According to Don, I think they said the last time they ever painted, which I don't think was too, too long ago, just somebody had dropped, left paint there. And, and they used it, so they should have left it there.
Yeah, that's a future, uh, future budget, I guess. Okay. Concrete post loads, so there's other stuff, it's just a schedule, I guess. Sorry to be able to do that. So we need to inspect the canopy, you think?
Well, I just thought Kevin Bennett is a Jackson building inspector. Doesn't make sense for him to stop by once in a while to construct, doing the construction just to make sure things look good and all.
I guess that's Jackson's, I don't know.
How long can you guys go with it?
Makes sense.
Sure.
I mean, you...
He don't want, that's why I do much. How much is the charge? You got, you, you got...
Not much.
Pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
Really, it is. I don't receive $20 an hour.
Something like that.
So about 15 minutes full time, with that.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, okay, I have to go up with that here. Architect for the signed building addition. Do you think we need to have an architect? Isn't this gonna be pretty simple or not?
Well, if you want somebody to put out the bid, right? If you wanna put it out the bid, then it helps to have something, you know, something that everybody's bidding on. If you wanna just tell somebody to build, they can do that too, you know.
How big is this one?
What's the estimate cost on that, Bert? Okay, you put it out the bid, I mean, how much money, what's the ballpark we're, we're looking at for that building addition?
Uh, building addition, $90,000, $80, $80, $90,000? Oh, I take that back. It's not quite that, it's not quite that much. It's, I sorry, I take that.
We'll have to put it out the bid with that kind of on hold, so.
So we have to...
Based on what you just said, it makes sense to have an architect designer, I guess.
Yeah, I, I should have taken $17,000 off that, or call, take $20,000 off that, so more like...
Is that much, really?
More like 40 to...
Do we need to do this, you think?
70.
Yeah. Really? Or, I forgot what the price was. Okay. The architect, I don't know, that's not cost, what, $15,000?
No, the last one to do the canopy, which is really tricky structural design, was about $5,000. This should be, I would think, pretty straightforward. There's one bead, you take that wall out, there's one bead to go in there. If you don't take the wall out, then it's really straight. If you just put in a double door, then it's really straightforward. I wouldn't imagine it's more than $2,000 or $3,000.
Okay.
Okay, hold on to that architect.
All right, so we agree we wanna have an architect designer to...
Yes.
It does make it straightforward and cleaner to put it in the bid.
And we should, if we're gonna do that, so we get it, so we bid it this winter, ready to...
Right, yeah, the good part is asking now, then you have the money for, you know, right on the money for town heating, for rent costs.
Okay, so that's that. Installing LP fire radiant heater.
In, in the budget when we were doing it last year, I went, you know, as an optional item, we had, I had put in there, um, and it was to include like a radiant heat.
Is it the cardboard bay?
Over the cardboard bay, it would heat that area, heat that area.
Projected down, right?
Right, so when they, if they're in the building, they turn on a switch and it gives them heat. And if they leave the building, they're not there, they might get turned off and there's no heat. So you don't need to insulate the building.
It's in the present building.
Present building, right.
I'm not so sure that we have something that will hold that up hand overhead.
I don't think these things weigh very much.
We're, I would hope that it, it can't weigh very much, because there's, it's not too substantial.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at it a little bit and the, like, my only thing is you have to pay attention to when the garage doors open. And you don't want to shield it, right? You have to see, catch the garage door on fire or something like that. But you just have to place it in the right spots. That doesn't matter, nor do they have to have to...
Will this keep our personnel happier, if we cut down on attrition?
I would think so. You ever seen someone, who was that, the guy, uh, can't think of his name, Ralph? Was he from, last winter I was up there a couple times, most of the days, and he's like a little kid in about four snowsuits up there.
Yeah.
He was miserable.
And also one of these costs, I'm sorry.
We have our, one of our employee representatives here.
He just dressed warmly, I'm happy for him.
Warm is good.
Yes.
I have not known it to be an issue with most people. I know Ralph is a little susceptible to cold.
It's nice to have it warm, it's not...
I have gone up there, I use it regularly. In the winter time, I've seen that our staff in there, very cold.
I think, I think the bathroom gets a lot of use during the winter time. That's the one heated space there.
But like, how much is it? Here, here, we got this, we have a budget problem here.
Yeah, this is, uh...
Like, no, we doubled, we doubled the cost of our building roughly, or more than what we estimated. Two and a half times, right? Couldn't wait, no.
Well, something was up.
Now, we were quite fit.
Twice?
We're 20, is that my deal?
That's all?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we was, I wanna say $90,000, and it said 96 or something like that now? And with this, when we redid it, the price came back down to pretty close to our budget. They're not too far off, so, call 10% over.
120 something, the numbers.
97 was the price.
So what is the radiant heater?
Comes up.
Let me just see here. I have options in here somewhere. I don't remember you ever had a price, I don't, you may have.
Yeah, I, it's all, the heater itself is only, I wanna say a thousand or two, a couple thousand dollars, call it. But then, then if it's propane, then you have to get propane tank in somewhere. So that, that's the thing, we have to just look into, talk to white naphtha oil, or whoever you use for...
Well, if you do a three-year with them, they'll supply the tank.
Right, just finding a spot for it, and then run a gas line over to the building, that'll be the, that'll be the trick. You can do them with electricity, but they're saying now with the canopy and the baleers that were running out of, you have to upgrade the power service if you want to have electric.
Well, what do you have, the 400 amp up there?
I'm not sure what it is.
But, you know, you are running close to your usage.
We put a lot more into that since these things have started, so...
Well, is this something we can add on later if we don't...
Yeah, I guess we just could look, we could, you know, I could...
Price it out a little bit?
Remember the fuel companies, like, I don't know, is that what you guys use, or?
Yeah, that's what we use.
And we could have them go up and take a look at the fuel tank and give us a price.
Yeah.
If you could just, then you can make the decision a little later on, but worthwhile getting some numbers together.
Yep, it's almost like we're...
In terms of making things operate, then it's, you know, I mean, it's something we might, we might be able to add on later if we, after everything's done, see where we are financially.
Okay, let's see, we've got one. We've got a couple things for executive session afterwards. Concerns about the dump store.
That's the butter.
Trust me. Someone else can make a motion to close the dumpster if anyone wants to...
I don't know, not a thing. I mean, if people are abusing it, it's for the public. And if they're abusing it, we're still willing to...
I guess my, trust me, I didn't want to have a cat in the dumpster particularly, until I've seen that's, is the, that was the biggest problem we ever had, if you're trying to close that right away. I'm telling you, trust me, gosh, it's been, when we, any, I don't know.
But the issue, the issue is...
I think we should, I'll hold them off, you go for help.
Yeah. If we're gonna think about that, I think maybe we need to make some clear signs up there, say, look, here's the deal.
Don't abuse it.
Well, there's a problem. The problem is right now is staffing. And where the location of where that store is, the staff are not in position to see what's going on. So people are dumping things there that they shouldn't. So my question is, is can we move it into a spot that's better visibility for where our staff is working?
Can, can we put it back where it was now that we...
This is a very interesting subject. It's a popular place. People who haven't been up there, say, for two years, like, going to California somewhere, and they've moved back here. Oh, we don't have the dumpster anymore. And we tell them where it is. People are happy to have it.
Yeah.
And it is a good, it is a good feature. It's worthwhile. Saves a lot of stuff going into the hopper. On the other hand, people use it to leave cans of paint, electronics. I think the suggestion of, I'll get back to the original question a minute, of having a better signage would be helpful. Putting it back to where it was, or with the fire in, you need weight straight ahead.
Yeah, and I was wondering, now that we've done the construction up there, can we put it back?
That's, that's...
Move it, this was in the way of doing anything, so...
Yeah, that's, that's a worthwhile suggestion.
Can we put it back there?
Think that would be more visible and easier to keep an eye on there?
Yes. People will always, as you know, sneak whatever they can, wherever they can. But at least they think that we are seeing them, even though we might not. There's more opportunity to see them if we move it to where it was than in its current...
Because I don't recall it being that much of a problem when it was in the other place. I mean, there was always something.
Well, traffic, though, that was one of the issues of people getting in and out of there, I thought, was, you know, especially going to the burn pile or the metal pile and stuff. People were always blocking that way. And then you had people backing up in the construction bins with tractors and trailers.
Might, I might have to be asked on, and then whoever, staff, to see if there's another location.
Parking wise, up where it is now is pretty good, because everybody goes up there. And they often leave their vehicles right by a plywood railing there and walk over the dumpster, which isn't too good, because it blocks where the people want to come in.
Well, that would...
So I'll throw a couple of comments there. My, my impression was this was being sort of modeled off of Lancaster's transfer station. And they have somebody that, one of the attendances is generally in the recycling area. So I guess if my impression was that at least once it made this building's done and the thing's there, there's generally gonna be somebody on the recycling side of the building that could potentially keep an eye on that a little bit more than it is. And I think it is good for parking where it is, you know, you got the extra space for cars and parking and not plugging up the other side, so...
So we agree that signage can be done right away, on site?
That's a good suggestion to follow through with.
And consider moving temporarily until we've got it fully operational for the recycling and that we have staff in place. Because right now, we don't have enough people up there in residence.
So you get where, you put off the end of the...
But I don't want, they're asking, you know?
We moved it from where it was over by the burn brick, because we needed to do the road that goes up around behind it. Well, now that that construction is done, can we go back over in that area and not be in the way?
Or is there another area?
Yeah.
That would be easier to keep track of, that wouldn't be in the way? Would we, maybe?
The only problem, I mean, that an area that would be keep track of would be right by bar plus, compacted between the compactor and the construction debris?
Or the other side to the south of the...
But I think it messes up, because then everybody's gonna be hanging out, because a lot of people hang out at that dumpster and spend some time pouring through the...
Yeah, it's a kind of, we thought we'd put it back there.
We have four more topics to go to.
So we're always gonna be going back and...
So wherever goes, we need to have parking. I agree, I can see that.
Someone had a suggestion at one point, which I did, and I'll bring it up again, because I don't think it would work necessarily. But they said, well, if there's so much interest in the dumpster, can volunteers go up and operate the dumpster? Now, I don't know if we'd get anybody, or if it's worth even considering. I saw someone marches this, right?
Yeah.
That would be ideal, but...
Well, they wouldn't, I don't know if there's that much interest in that.
What do you think, Bob, you interested?
Uh, I'm not there to just put my name on the list, but I like the idea. If there is that much interest in the community in maintaining it, then, uh, it shouldn't be that tough to find people to step up. And maybe we decide that it's only open on the hours where we have volunteers willing to staff.
You don't know if you don't ask, so you may as well ask.
So we can do this, we can get something from Jackson Home, we can get something about it, come on, and just say for any volunteers to help with the dumpster.
Help with the dumpster, keep it going, you know?
And we'll also do the signage.
Signage room.
At least ask where else we can locate it, so, okay.
Just my limited experience from signing has been, people really do not.
Well, I know, yes.
I just, like, when that recycling thing opened up and we put the signs up there, I just got out the first time and people were just throwing it everywhere. The signs is, and they're like, ah, and they just threw it all in.
We're still gonna get some of that, even that.
And then yell at staff, and they're like, yeah.
All right, there we go on that one.
Certainly gotta be an education process going on sometime, but we're not ready yet. We really aren't. I mean, we aren't, you know, we're not set up yet.
Skid steer, need to do that?
Yes, uh, the skid steer, I sent a message out. Did you guys look to approve that?
Uh, yeah.
We, I think we only need three rims, because Don found a rim up there, but we need four tires. I was surprised, because, because things change. I don't want things to, uh, the, to load those, to load those tires, you need new rims. I thought just take the tires off, load them, and put them on the rims we got. But apparently, I've been, I was told that you can't do that. If they're gonna buy the tires, they need rims, they...
Is that because they're full of, where that's...
Yeah, we load them, load them so they, they don't get flat. So what was...
Oh, you're talking about filling the tires with new rims? I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah. They can't do it on old rims.
So that's okay to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, and for chat was the best price, so let's, I love the idea that we can keep it working.
Yeah, all right, so we'll load the tires. There was also the window. I have no idea how much the window is. I could, I need to ask Don about the price of the window, so he can, I didn't want you to say go ahead and buy a window. But he didn't tell us that, so...
Can't mobile mic do an S-4 on that?
On the window?
Yeah.
No, I think you just call, uh, what is it, a bot?
Bot catcher? Then guess he used one, probably.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Sure.
So I'll do that. Then the next one is, okay, the Jackson feed demo procedure.
Um, yeah, the, we had talked about picking up the money instead of those guys delivering it? Send somebody up on a Monday to grab the money every week?
Two things. Don't store the money up there. You know, it's just not the place to keep $3,000 in.
Especially now, since the whole world knows.
It's good, it's an award, honestly, and that's not the way to do it. And the invoices, if one is voided, it still goes in.
Right.
So that the numbers are in sequence.
Yes.
There's nothing missing. You know, if you missed one up, say you messed it up, but put it in.
Right.
And it stays, you know, with the pack.
Now, so, you're gonna, what?
The girls, Julie and Julie, are gonna pick it up.
They'll pick it up. Not just gonna pick up Jackson's?
Just Jackson's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't affect you guys, though. That's just our, our share of our money.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all. We just wanna let you know, so you wouldn't...
No, that's fine, okay.
Saves them driving over and they're going the other way anyways, so they drop off their stuff with Brenda. Saves them a trip.
Okay. In the county, you'll do it on that, okay? You're just gonna be doing a project, monthly meeting. I have no problem with the meetings. Well, I don't, until we get time to decide when it's gonna, so we all agree to have a monthly meeting. The next one's gonna be when?
Right.
Every two months.
Some month we're gonna have a meeting, right?
This is, this is July's monthly meeting, or August's, no.
Right, right.
I think that's fine, that's a good idea. Now, I will say, see, I didn't ask Don to come today, he's just working, so I'm gonna, when we do these, try to schedule one Wednesday or Thursday, so he can make the meeting, you know? Today there wasn't too much. Most of the stuff didn't involve him necessarily, or it's good to have Benny on some information.
Right.
But we do, there are gonna be coming up some procedural things that we need to have Don...
Wednesday, Thursday's worked fine for me, at this point.
It's not, Cass is days off, so we'll have to, either if he comes here for an hour, or either pay him or give him another hour off or something, we'll figure that out. And see if he's willing, we haven't even asked yet, even say it's like they are. The only other alternative is just to do it after 6:00, when he gets done with something, so... Or in the morning, it's just not good for most people before he goes to work. So I'll talk to him and see what he thinks about when he could come to a meeting.[1738.88]
That'd be good, because he should be included, I'd like to see him on the other, because, uh, I think he's doing a lot of hard work, and.
I've been impressed, since he's been there, Earl, two of them, some like, they've been, you know, so they're grinding on.
Yeah, a lot of hard work.
Now, the appointing person for each board, I, I do, I'm not sure that's, that I agree necessarily, I understand the reasoning, but it's kind of, I mean, I, I suppose, if it's a, well, you know, to replace a two-by-four, that's one thing, but there may be some pretty big decisions, and I'm not sure, one, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with making decisions on behalf of a board, or my board.
When, when you have a board that's set up like ours, that you have to have two votes from each select board to make a decision anyway, how do you, I, I think it goes against the.
Alright, okay, so then, we'll just go to, see what we can do about a monthly meeting, yes, I think that would.
Well, there's gonna be some things we need to figure out, and I guess what I would say is, if Burr has a question, and he calls me, like I did with tires, I just called you, we can, we just, if there's an answer, we, we don't have to have a meeting necessarily, if you're gonna answer to something, that's all.
Yeah, but maybe, you know, in terms of tires as an example, you know, Don probably shouldn't be going to Burr about tires, don't.
He did, he went to a lot.
Alright, I just wanted to make sure, you know, things, you know.
Yeah, no, no, he did, that was, no, he came to us, but I was saying, on the project.
Project stuff, certainly, yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I guess it would be something like the paint, I'm trying to, the guy really wanted paint last week, but.
There has to be a point in this process where we finally get our staff up to speed, we have a, a manager that's there on the property, this board should be setting policy, we should be setting the budget for it, but we shouldn't be micromanaging decisions. So, there should be a lot of, there should be a lot of operational, uh, latitude for the manager to get things done, as long as he doesn't violate his budget and his policy, so, we should.
Operational, yeah, in, I'm sorry, in the sense that, he's got a lot, I mean, he knows what he, he knows what he needs, I, I think that, we'll pick up on wording on the agenda about making decisions, the very last point, and that, that should be, I, I, in my mind, you have some people that wanna make recommendations, but, but, I don't, I don't think you wanna change the decision-making piece of it. And if it's operational, and it's within the budget, it's not necessarily something we, we need the transfer station committee involved in, I think is where I agree with John.
Thank you.
And the other thing, too, I think, you know, you should, you know, I, I'm the liaison for, for the transfer station, and I don't know if you guys are signed people, do you, at all, no? Maybe just add, so when Don has somebody to go to for the town of Bartlett, then he can come to meet for the town of Jackson issues, and that way, you know, we can keep them somewhat separate that way, that don't require the board to meet, you know, things like dumping illegally, or, you know, things like that, I think that's, that's something that we can, you know, some things we can separate, you know, certainly some things we can't, but. You know, Don can go to a liaison, that would be nice, too, I think that's what's kind of referred to in that second bullet, is the fact that, you know, just having a, a point person to contact when something does come up.
Alright.
Is our agenda complete, except for I'm not public?
I think so, unless, I mean, Ben is here for the public, I don't know, he has, I must say.
Okay, we should all ask for a comment.
I have, I think, three things, one is, I'm glad you have this in the Jackson E news, with this meeting, number two is, I'm here because I'm interested in my workplace, also, in my, interest in my employers, and thirdly, I enjoy the job.
Well, thank you for being there.
Probably know.
Yeah, well, thank you for being there.
Well, that's good.
Why don't you step up and take a couple more days?
Well, Mondays are a possibility, but not every day, you know, I filled in for Earl for two months, that was fine, but I'm not working at Convent Scenic anymore, I mean, the rest was.
So, now you're just doing Fridays?
That's what it's done.
You're just doing Fridays?
I'm at the transfer station on Fridays.
Yeah, now, but now you said you were going to do Mondays, too.
No, no, no.
I heard that, I heard that. I have to make it work.
I can be available.
It's on film.
Sense of that. So, if this is anybody that needs to fill in for Monday, I'd, I'd be glad to fill in.
We need to fill in for every one.
I do my best up there to, to tell people, when they ask me about my job, to, to share, to share the information that it's, it's, it's cool working up there.
Yes, I recruited some people, yeah.
I, I try to give a positive view of employing, working up there, if anybody who wants to be inside all the time, may not as well, just don't even consider them.
Right, right. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
See you with the next one.
We need to have a motion to go into non-public, and I don't know the number, so I just have, I have to ask.
Go ahead, sir.
Personnel for, for personnel matter, I'll say that, but I can fill in.
Uh, ninety-three, two, C?